We would like to call this meeting to order. This is a city council work session held at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. We'd like to welcome anybody who is here observing and of course, or whom I be watching on our YouTube channel. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. We'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call, please.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley, here. Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I've asked Councilor Eric to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If we could all stand, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The only item we have on our agenda for this work session is our item number one, I-40 Trade Port Corridor update. Adam Wasserman and Lois Yates of GLD Partners will provide the council with an overview of the I-40 Trade Port Corridor to include its purpose, objectives, partners, funding opportunities, and status. And we'll turn some time over first to our acting city manager and deputy city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to start first by welcoming the city of Winslow to this meeting this evening. They are attending virtually. And so if it's appropriate, can we ask them to just do a quick introduction of themselves?
Of course.
So that they can get the same information?
Yeah.
Great.
Hi, yes, this is Mayor Roberta Conno. Thank you so much for inviting us today. We're looking forward to hearing all of the up and coming things with the I-40 Trade Port Corridor partners. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim McLean. I'm a councilman and I just want to say thank you for allowing us to listen in as we strive to work together to further this endeavor. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Crisp, I'm the vice mayor here in Winslow. I'm super excited to hear the presentation and hopefully get some new information. Thank you.
Hi, Councilwoman Darcy McKee.
And David, did you want to introduce yourself?
Well, city managers aren't used to getting to introduce themselves, but yes, this is Dave Coolidz, city manager for the city of Winslow, and I appreciate the opportunity to listen in. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, city of Winslow. I'd like to take this opportunity to also bring up Adam Wasserman and Lois Yates. They are our partners that we are working with. If you recall, they were instrumental in helping us get the RIA designation. They are with GLD Partners and they have been working with us very heavily behind the scenes, working with Winslow, working with New Mexico on the I-40 Trade Port Corridor project. And so because this project is beginning to gain some momentum, we felt it was an important time for the council to get informed and educated on what is happening with this project, some of the funding opportunities, again, the purpose, all of the partners involved in this as well. The vice mayor has taken this project sort of under her wing and has attended some of, if you recall, she went to LA with Supervisor Lingamfelter, with GLD Partners and some of our city staff. She has also participated in a few of the project meetings behind the scenes as well. So as I ask Adam and Lois to come up and share their presentation and share the exciting things that are happening with the project, Vice Mayor, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
I too am excited to hear the presentation and I welcome Adam and Lois coming up to show us what we have as far as an update on the I-40 Trade Port Corridor. I also wanted to welcome the city of Winslow, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good to meet you.
And Adam and Lois, adjust that mic however. It doesn't go up much higher than that, so be sure to speak, stand close to the podium and speak into it so everybody can hear well. Thank you.
Let's do that, about that. You can lean in. So as was mentioned, I'm Adam Wasserman, GLD Partners, that's Global Logistics Development Partners. This is my colleague, one of our partners, Lois Yates. And appreciate the time. We'll walk you through what is a fairly complex arrangement and multiple states and kind of the opportunity and please interrupt us as appropriate and we welcome your questions, comments, concerns. So Lois, did you want to say anything before?
Pardon me?
Did you want to say anything before we begin?
No, we're just delighted to be here. Thank you for having us. We think this is a wonderful opportunity for the I-40 corridor all the way over to Albuquerque and we're delighted that Kingman is interested in playing a role in it.
Just to say, you know, we're an Arizona firm. We don't work in Arizona all that much, so it's kind of fun to undertake a project we think that is of national significance and a project that essentially will be a model for a variety of things in the U.S. And we hope our state supports it and gets behind it and we'll sort of discuss some of that. So we, you know, during the pandemic, we had a supply chain crisis. A lot of things stopped. Cargo couldn't move in and out of the country. It couldn't move through the country. The trade port proposition started before that, but gained a lot of attention during the supply chain crisis because it became quite obvious to a lot of folks that moving things in and out is really quite important to the competitiveness of a lot of things. Our national economy, regional economies, et cetera. So what is, what is on the screen for you today here is that the way we see the trade port corridors evolving over time. It's about moving cargo more efficiently from foreign places through our ports, from domestic places to other domestic places, supply chain points, and creating that in such an integrated way, which is about energy, it's about logistics and supply chain, it's about industrial infrastructure, that we are supporting national objectives, supply chain resiliency, national security, and economic development, especially in rural areas. So we're supporting economic development, we're supporting the transition of our economy to next generation industries, and we're doing that in an organized way around key strategic hubs. It can't be just anywhere. They have to be in places where the modeling says it best works. And so that's why we're here. We think these are nationally transformative projects. They are a mixture of energy projects and logistics and investment hubs. These are private projects that we as the public sector here in this room, we're not the public sector, we're a private company, but a lot of the effort is organizing the public sector around receiving that private investment by acting strategically and creating that investable vehicle so that we can better attract that investment and compete for industry that we don't compete with now. So in the end, will this be a public project or a private project? It'll be seen as a private project with some strategic public investment and involvement upfront. In other words, it has to meet public policy goals for the city of Kingman, or the county, or the state, or otherwise, because we really want it to be built around what's best for the public sector, but do it in a way that creates economic value for shippers and logistics companies and others that just need that platform to invest in. It's probably at a right time to say, it's nobody's job to do what we're doing, what we're doing, what we're doing with the city, what we very much hope to do with the full city and the city council. It's, it's not the federal government's job. State government doesn't have a whole lot of focus on things like this. There's no one particular company or industry type that's responsible. Some of it's property, some of it's infrastructure, some of it's logistics, but the integration of all these strategies together creates the opportunity for these hubs. And if it wasn't for us coming together, it probably won't happen. And so we kind of try to underline that it's a private project with some, some public support up front and some structuring. There's three corridors up here. There's the green corridor. Let me just outline these. The corridor in green over on the west coast in California, that's the project we cut our teeth on. That was the first of these trade port corridors. It's called Trade Port California and it's built to number one, solve public policy problems. Awful air, terrible congestion, support for economic development in rural areas of the state. So not in Los Angeles, not in the Bay Area, but in the Central Valley, places like that. And we did that and we had that, we took this proposition of this integrated strategy to the federal government and the US DOT said, it checks all of our boxes. Can you propose this to us in the context of this new program that they were creating? And Tina mentioned RIA, Regional Infrastructure Accelerator Program, which was an effort by the US DOT to be a partner with transformative projects, not a grantor. It's not really about granting money. It's about a different sort of relationship between the federal government around how to create investable projects for the private sector. And so they saw it as a public-private model and what we were doing was attractive because it meets a lot of public objectives and it's all built around attracting the private investment. So they designated Trade Port California three years ago, an RIA, became a partner in it. We're working with them weekly. And so that's been a new model for the federal government. And then they came to us and they said, you know, we, we see this as replicable. We can, we can do it again somewhere else. So they said, east-west is even more of a prize. California's got big problems, but those ports and that cargo moving in and out through the country is even a larger issue. It's about the whole of the country. So we proposed to them the I-10 Trade Port Carter and the I-40 Trade Carter. And they have received both of those with approval. And so now we have three trade port corridors as designated by the US DOT, which means if we go to Washington, we're not asking for help, we're saying, we're a partner with the government anyway. We want you to join with the Department of Transportation.
I just want to add one thing. We all know during the pandemic how bad the supply chain crisis was. And a lot of people think it's over, but we're just fooling ourselves because even before the pandemic, these supply chains had all kinds of blips in them. If it was, if there was a labor disruption at the ports, all kinds of things happened and they're going to happen again. And that's why we think these corridors are so important that we can begin to come up with some solutions to some of these problems that have been affecting this country for a lot of years and will do it in the future. So we think this is the one step forward.
I should mention, and I know we're going slowly, so just tell us to speed up. This whole idea of the trade port system started around the dinner table at a restaurant in San Pedro, California with the port director in Los Angeles. And they had this vision of the port playing a more integral role with logistics throughout the whole country. They're the largest, busiest seaport logistics hub in the Western Hemisphere, but they're a public body and they're essentially a department of the city of Los Angeles. So they don't have this sort of national reach, they don't have the public, the private relationships, they don't have the authority to work on anything in Kansas, much less in Kingman, Arizona. So they had this vision. What they came to us with initially was what if we create inland ports? And they, this is the conversation at the Italian restaurant in Phoenix and Las Vegas. And that turned into, we have some issues in California, what if we streamline cargo movement and create an economic activity in California? That's the Trade Port California. But having the port on our side is a big deal. So when the port director goes on CNBC and speaks about national and international trade and conditions, folks listen and so they're a partner in the project. So, you know, it's a private project in terms of who's going to operate it and invest in it largely, but what are the public objectives? Why are we, why is the public sector even involved in something like this? From a federal perspective, as we said, it contributes in a big way to the more efficient national supply chain system. So the port of Los Angeles will be with us in Washington DC and say, if we do this, our port becomes more efficient, which means we can support the nation more efficiently, we become a more successful port. Increases economic competitiveness, especially where our hubs are. So where there's a trade port hub, we want to do a trade port hub here in Kingman. We think it changes the competitiveness model. That's, that's a Bennett, Bennett issue of how do we attract more investment and become a competitor for investment that maybe Kingman really wasn't a strong competitor for now, but we've got sites, infrastructure, better connectivity through the ports and to others, you know, domestic supply chain points. We're talking a lot about manufacturing, some distribution essentially. I don't know how that works. The feds like it, we like it, the idea of collaboration and partnership between public and private, it's really the holy grail. If we can create opportunities for the private sector investment to pour into a project that's got structure, where the public sector is supportive and stable and feds and the state and you think it's important to your region, they're going to be far more inclined to be party to this. It reduces VMT, Vehicle Miles Travel. So this is, transportation planners talk a lot about this. It contributes to air pollution, it's inefficient, you know, we have factories and this and that all over the place. If we consolidate some of that in a kind of an organized structure, it reduces the amount of miles trucks have to drive, it creates efficiencies, less air pollution, all that. And, you know, from a state perspective or a county perspective or even the city, I guess, it, it reduces maintenance and increases traffic safety. Some of these propositions and some trade ports is about taking trucks off the road, putting it onto rail. So the BN, the Union Pacific, a whole host of national short line holding companies that run short line operations are a part of the project. They're part of the system and they would like to carry more cargo on the rail. It's just not that easy to do, but we create the environment where there's these hubs. Some of that is possible. And so that, you know, increases road safety and it creates efficiencies for shippers. Clean energy side, certainly this was a major topic in California, partly because of the way they want to think and partly because of the problems they have. I mean, it's pretty bad air in the Central Valley, this issue of reducing greenhouse gas and bad stuff in the air, to the extent we're reducing trucks on the road or we're increasing the use of next generation vehicles because the technology is there and certain states are requiring it. So it will be happening. And how do we sort of make advantage from that technological advance and some of that public policy emphasis?
Before we get, we're going to get started now on the I-40 Trade Port Corridor conversation. But one thing I'd like to add before that starts is, as we were reviewing what's been going on in the state of Arizona, we were just really blown away by how much attention has not been paid to the I-40 corridor. It is the busiest freight corridor in the United States and we were just really, I use the word appalled for, for good reason. We're appalled that the state hasn't paid more attention to it. So that even, that just gave us a greater impetus to want to move this project forward because it is a vital, vital link for national security as well as for goods movement. So we want to see the state pay more, in terms of public objectives, we want the state to start paying more attention to this I-40 corridor.
Perhaps you all think about how the state treats Kingman and Northern Arizona anyway? I don't know. But we have an opinion that might echo that and some frustration with the state because it's, it's sort of taken for granted as a pass through, we would say. If you look at their documents, their policy and so forth, what if this was part of something that was nationally important and actually became an economic activity hub that the state wants to pay attention to, doesn't just need to, so. Much of this, it's here, I've already said. So, you know, it's a public-private story. We want to talk about not the private sector in general, but in some specific terms. There are a lot of private companies that are part of the trade port proposition and will increasingly become part of that. So all of the major truck manufacturers are a part of the trade port. They want to sell trucks, they're going to have to sell certain sorts of trucks. They see us as a vehicle to do that. They're really quite aggressively interested and involved in the project. There's a lot of truck fleets, the folks running the trucks are involved, a lot of logistics companies. There's clean energy investors. There's infrastructure investors in the project that are party to wanting to see something like this be successful. I won't say it again, we don't see it as a public project, we see it as a project that is catalyzed by public, not just money, but actions, leadership. And with that, private sector, we're pretty sure will follow. We have Interstate New Mexico here.
I know, I noticed that.
A faux pas.
Shame on us.
Sorry. I mentioned the port of Los Angeles. So folks, the leaders from the logistics community and some of these other players came together, said, we have an I-40 story, could we pull this off? And that's how it started. And starting, so looking at the national map, so the red line is essentially I-40 as it runs across the country. All those tributaries that look like rivers are really roads. This is a roadmap that talks about the feeders, the markets that feed into the I-40 corridor. And it's perhaps even a little more complicated than this, but if I'm moving cargo through Los Angeles, through Kingman, and I want to get to St. Louis, I'm probably going to be using I-40 for a lot, lot, lot of that. Or councilman even into Ohio in some cases. So we see the, the way the federal government has received this, the way we're talking with private investors is this is a national project. It's not a project to Kingman. It's a, Kingman is the first and most, has the opportunity to be that first hub to something that is larger. So the investors are interested probably in the whole corridor eventually, but the first movers, the opportunity for Kingman or Winslow or Albuquerque, that's the first phase of the way we're thinking of the I-40 Trade Port Corridor. That's all it is right now. That's all it wants to be. We got to get that part right. Kingman, Winslow, and Albuquerque were selected after a lot of modeling, modeling from a variety of perspectives, where cargo moves, where it might sit, where manufacturing might be, where trucks need to fuel up, gas up, or in the future, put other sorts of fuel in their vehicles, right? Next generation powertrains. So where does it make sense, how far apart and so forth? So that's, that's how we got to that and we can talk about that some more. We think, I'll go backwards. Albuquerque is at the end of the line. It's past the distance a truck can drive today from the port, but it's a ma, excuse me, it's a major hub, it's a larger city, it's where two interstates crisscross. So that's, that's important. Winslow is halfway essentially between Albuquerque and Kingman. It's got a lot of land, it's got rail operations, it's got some aggressive sort of investors that are hoping to monetize that and do some industrial development. It was in the right location, had the right leadership, and so it made sense to put a trade port there. And then Kingman, great assets, location, you know, things you know, doorstep to California with state mandates that are taking place in terms of clean truck and all of that. Our negotiations and our work with a lot of folks on the private side really do believe Kingman can play a different sort of role than it's played in the past, especially with the trade port proposition. Trucks that won't go into California, can't go into California. We do think the Los Angeles to Kingman leg is quite critical for the whole of the corridor, but in the first phase. And we can describe that some more. And then Winslow gets us to a point where today, trucks that are driven by a human being have to stop. They might get to like the state line or to gallop, but largely they have to stop by federal rules that are called hours of service rules. So taken together, that's kind of how we, we came to those three places. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just, we all know that the railroad tracks are running right along the I-40 all the way across. And so as you see, when BN is coming through here and you see the, what we call intermodal trains, which are the containers, most of those containers are going to end up in Dallas. It's interesting how, you know, you go along and at one point, you're going to go one north and a lot of, a lot of the goods that are moving through here right now end up in Dallas. They're consumer goods, come through the ports, being put in these containers and they're moving across the country. And then when they come back, there are a lot of containers coming back and they're coming back empty. We want to be able to fill those containers with products that are made along our I-40 corridor.
And by sending something back full, that means there's two-way economics on the logistics. There's a lot of folks that would like to see that happen. It's a matter of sort of putting the pieces together so it's even more possible. You know, do the...
Yeah, this is, as we talked about before, it's the fastest growing goods movement corridor in the United States. We have, as you can look at the charts here and you'll see how it compares I-40, I-10, and I-80. And it by far is going to be growing faster than any of the rest of them. So it's the largest in tonnage, it's the largest and the busiest truck route, and it is that, once again, that umbilical cord between the Asian markets and the rest of the United States. And Jean Siroka, who is the director of the port of Los Angeles, loves to tell everybody how goods that come through his port go to every single zip code in the United States. So, you know, it's, I can't, we can't underestimate the amount of goods that are moving across this, this corridor as well as the I-10 corridor throughout the United States.
So we mentioned the federal government. US DOT is not only supportive of the project, they're supportive of the whole model. And in fact, they'd like to kind of make the model an example for other things in the country. That's exciting and interesting to them, but maybe it's powerful for us to attract private investment and frankly, some public investment that's going to be poured into a lot of the things that the Trade Port Carter is trying to accomplish. And we'd like it to be strategically invested here so we can do the rest of what we're doing. The RIA was, was granted. There was a grant, but it's a designation, so it's kind of a stamp of approval. That's how the feds would see it. The ongoing partnership is with DOT, but it gives us this platform to go to Washington as we're, we're part of what they want to see and we've, they've already sort of analyzed and, and agreed that this project is of national importance. So as we go and talk with the Department of Commerce or the Department of Energy, we do it with transportation and leadership from that agency as well. We'll talk a little bit about the congressional side in terms of support from our state congressional delegation, the New Mexico congressional delegation, to an extent, we're going to increase this, the California delegation. In other words, everybody has something in common in terms of the, you know, the value and the fruit that might come out of this. And so it's been received very well by our delegation from the state, but others, staffers on the Hill, these committees, and then the agencies themselves. So our job, we assume as we might go forward, is to monetize that with you as best we can so we see that strategic investment coming. I mentioned the private side. There's a trade port con- I mentioned the private side, there's a trade port consortium that's been created, it continues to evolve, but what's in those boxes there with yellow letters, that's the categories of companies that we're working with. So shippers may be the largest shippers, companies that are doing e-commerce, or retailers, or industrial, companies that have, are managing industrial supply chains. I mentioned the truck manufacturers, so that's Volvo, Paccar, which makes Peterbilt and Kenworth, and Demler Trucks, which is Demler's American company that builds Freightliner, and school buses and other things. So, Demler by itself owns 55% of the US market, the three of those companies together, you add a few others, but it's most of the heavy trucks that are sold in the US. They're a partner in this. And so those, we have the truck fleet operators, so the biggest companies, and some smaller companies, companies that are drayage operators, so they're the folks that take the containers from the port somewhere, and they don't run here right now. And so the largest drayage operator in the US wants to be part of this, and is very interested in running now down the I-40 corridor, building a hub at strategic places. Kingman is the closest, so we would think it would be, it would fare the best, but from our perspective, that's, that's a good thing. The railroads, as I mentioned, are, are party to it. We won't have rail operations in every trade port. They'll be, there'll be some, we're working on a brand-new intermodal facility in California, monetizing existing rail assets, it's not about building lots of new rail lines or anything like that. Logistics operators like third-party logistics firms, companies that are sort of guiding the logistics. Strangely, the University of California path, that's, that's not a private company, but we put them on the list because they're the preeminent research institution in the world for next-generation transportation technologies. Autonomous technologies started there, and they're very excited about the trade port program, and in fact, they have led, right now, today, they have led an effort in Washington to, to create the trade port corridors, this autonomous rural route where they want to do testing and development of these technologies with a lot of big tech companies along the corridor, and Mojave Community College has signed on to participate in that if it's won, so we're excited about that. And most importantly in the end, the most important folks on here, really, are the shippers, the people moving the cargo, it's their cargo, and the investors. So that might be infrastructure, fund investors, investors in a variety of different sorts of aspects of the project. So it's just another map with a little bit more detail, and Kingman, right now, all these things need to be worked out and refined, and we see the trade port as maybe about a 1,500-acre project. It may not all be in one consolidated place, it'd be nice if it was, nice, nice square, but in real life, that's not usually the way it occurs. But we see that sort of scale, connected to California. Frankly, we see the connection to Las Vegas as unique and important for a variety of reasons, as a logistics and a production and consumption hub for Las Vegas. You have this rail park, that your industrial park has been quite successful, so we think this takes that further and amplifies that. And there's a lot of interest in rail that the city is managing and understands now, and we'd like to sort of make that part of and accelerate some of that as it relates to the city's intentions at the airport and beyond. That there is an airport right in the middle of where we're talking about, plus or minus, is valuable. Air cargo is a part of this, it's not a driver, it's a result of. So, we work on projects where steel coils move in on a rail flatbed, and might be turned into an electronic product and flown out via air, might go out via truck as well. So having an airport as part of that is, is helpful. And so, you know, that, you have an airport that is, has high ambitions, so we think that's, that's potentially very valuable. Each of the trade ports will have a truck mobility complex, which is not really a truck stop, it's really a port. So you've got seaports, you have airports, you've got truck mobility, probably should call it a truck mobility port, but it's really where fueling and charging happens, where trucks can get energy, but it's also where logistics happens. So you go past your TA or your pilot, I mean, those are truck stops, and one of those companies might want to be involved, and we might want them involved, or not. But they don't handle cargo, they fuel you up, they give you services, and you move on, that's part of it, but the logistics component of inventory and cargo, stationing there, being sorted there, split there, is a big part of the trade port itself, and certainly the truck mobility complex, as well as services of a whole variety of sorts to support today's truck and tomorrow's truck, as we look at more fluid movement of cargo. We're working on a project with the Port of LA, it's a, it's a cargo data management project. So they can track cargo when it leaves a port, let's say, in Asia, they know where it's at on the ocean, they know what day and what hour it docks, therefore, what time the truck needs to come pick it up, and that's where they stop. And we want to take that system national, so that if you're located in the trade port, you're a shipper, you're a company, you know where your cargo is, and you're part of that seamless cargo data flow. As we move into trucks operating more autonomously at some point, technology is sort of there. Managing cargo data and truck data is, is all part of the same sort of structure. I'll mention Winslow, Winslow's here with us, and Albuquerque briefly. Winslow has a lot of land, some of it is being sort of consolidated for industrial development, for a lot of large-scale sorts of investment, investment that may or may not be appropriate here, I don't know, but it's medium-heavy, some of it, industry, as well as hopefully some, some other kinds of manufacturing. So there's a, there's a big vision right now about Winslow's industrial development, its industrial park in the future. They have some rail as well, operations, so they'd like to monetize that. They have an airport, small GA airport, and again, a truck mobility complex. So we see Winslow as a part of it, but a distinct part, where the markets are very different for each of the trade ports. In Albuquerque, a little larger facility, so there's a 6,000-acre site, we're working with the counties and the local government, property owners want a, want a combined partnership structure where the trade port is brought forward phase by phase. The first phase would be about 1,500 acres, but it's a larger market, a larger set of potentials around certain technologies, again, fairly different than the other parts of the...
Yeah, I think that's an important point to make. I think it's important to understand that each of these trade ports has a different niche in the market, and they're not going to be competing against each other, but they have, they appeal to certain kinds of businesses, and I think that's what makes this so good for us, because Albuquerque, high-tech, all the things that go along with the national labs that are there, and then Winslow has visions of larger, more industrial kinds of operations. And I think Kingman has made their mark historically on smaller, well-financed, well-run, small businesses that have continued to produce and bring product into the Kingman area. And I know, I've, I've worked in this market a lot of years ago, when I was at the Department of Commerce, and it's just amazing what y'all have done here, and you've prided yourself on building those smaller, mid-sized companies and getting them to prosper and grow, and we think that's what your niche is.
Lois led the Department of Commerce here some years ago.
A lot of years.
Under three different governors, she chased them all.
A lot of years.
She got one impeached, I think, I'm not sure. Do we remember that? So, from our perspective, as we think about what will make a trade port in Kingman successful, support by you and the state government, that there's one kind of common view, as if we attract these private investors to be part of this thing, the first questions they're going to ask is, you know, that they have, they have the support and partnership of folks that run the city and run the state. We, we think that, you know, that creating good business proposition and addressing public policy is important. We think it's important anyway, we think it's why you're here probably, to do good things. We know that everybody has a slightly different view of that, we're trying to weave all that together into a package that works for federal government, local government, and the state government, attracts that private investment, and frankly, wins some, some, some public investment. Located along the 40, we, Lois said, it's, it's, it's the one corridor that is frankly the most important corridor in the country. In our state, in Arizona, it doesn't go through big cities, doesn't get a lot of attention. If it had a lot of pollution, was running through Phoenix, might be getting a little more attention. We mentioned the strategic location to California, it's, it's Kingman's claim to fame, it's ace in the hole really on this project, and I think that's what economic development sort of propositions anyway, it's to amplify that in a much larger way by its connectivity to the, to the ports specifically. You've got an airport, you've got rail, you're planning more rail at your industrial park, we've got the busiest highway, and we want to connect as quickly and as efficiently as we can to that seaport. So we have four modes functioning essentially seamlessly. We'd like, essentially, really, that the Port of Los Angeles has a sign up here and says, if you're, if you do work here and you're shipping out of here, exporting your product that you're manufacturing somewhere else, it could be elsewhere in the country or out of the country, you're as good as in the Port of Los Angeles. And how can we sort of get as close to that seamless proposition as possible? Arizona's pretty cost competitive, Kingman is very cost competitive, pretty easy place to do business, that's obviously going to help. Our work and experience in California, we cannot say that, and I know it's kind of a joke, we don't really want to beat up the state, but it's, it's hard, it's really hard to do things there. And so it adds costs, and a lot of companies that we work with just won't do it there. So, you know, with you and Bennett, we want to, we want to sort of amplify again what the opportunity is here. We, we want to make sure it can grow, because we think it's going to be successful, we don't want to start with, you know, do 50 or 100 acres and call that a day, it wouldn't be worth the effort, to be honest with you. So we, we see it as, the growth dimension is pretty important, and property owners' property structure needs to be involved in that, so, you know, whether it's public or private, we don't own any land in Kingman now. You, I guess you own some land, there's some other property owners, but you got to do it somewhere, and there's no project unless we have a place to do it, so. I'm going to go more quickly. So in the end, this is a public-private structure. Specialized model, this hasn't been done anywhere before. So you're either attracted to that, or you're scared by it, but we're creating a new model in the United States, that's why the feds are involved, we're going to get a lot of attention for it, we're going to have a lot of attention from the private investors. I'm just going to sort of go down. In the end, Trade Port Development Corporation is the model that sort of we're all talking about now. And so we've got the city of Kingman, we've got the city of Winslow, we've got two counties, local governments in New Mexico, and then we've got us. So we're planning it, we're bringing people together, we're sort of outlining where things will go, and what things will cost, and a federal agenda, and a state agenda, and working with private players to bring them to the table. That's not going to get it built, so we need a vessel to attract that private investment and to undertake those projects with, literally merging the public and private investment together. So TDC is essentially a creation of ours, that is, you are, one way or the other, excuse me, a, a co-owner in, in that TDC is the implementation tool that we are talking about that would actually attract that investment and put that money to work. Because if it's not, if we're not going to do that, then it's, it's, it's not going to happen. It's, we're going to rely on somebody to do it, and it's, as I said earlier, it's nobody's job to do this, there's too many asset classes and business types that are sort of mixed in here. TDC would act as the federal and state legislative and investment coordinator, we, we think we are launching very soon an effort in Washington and in Phoenix to, in a very organized way, to support the project, tell the story, win their investment, win their support for that, and you would be a party to that. And, you know, TDC would sort of basically construct and operate the public-private model that we've been talking about. Burnaleo County, that's Burnco there, is right now, so that's in Albuquerque, one of the metropolitan counties in Albuquerque. They submitted the application on your behalf and all of the corridor's behalf to the federal government. They said, they just raised their hand and said, "We, we want to support it, and we'll be the submitting body," if there needed to be one. So they are acting in that role, I don't think they're dictating anything, I think they're trying to coordinate. They're drafting in a corridor agreement that will, they, they want to submit for everybody to kind of mark up, which is more specifically how the hubs and, and we, and how we're all going to work together, and what the obligations are. So that would include the two counties in Albuquerque, the cities of Winslow and Kingman, there is a village, there's a small city in the Albuquerque area called the Village of Las Lunas, that's where their rail park is, so that's a future option later on. And then the TDC, coming together, basically saying who's going to do what and how we're going to make this work. That's the corridor agreement, and then there's an intention to, that there's a, there's a hub agreement, so an agreement on how to develop this hub in this location, what's going to be where, how we're going to make it happen, what are the project requirements in terms of investment, how we're going to raise public money and private money and develop these projects. So there's a hub agreement that we would expect we would be talking about in terms of how to make that work for the city. I think, was said earlier, the, the under, overarching structure of this is how to create economic development, and as, as the project becomes more successful, that the communities benefit from that, in jobs and tax base, and direct revenue. That's, that's the intention, you'll tell us what you think. Currently, there are some federal funding proposals that have just wound their way through early, one is called RAISE, and that's been submitted for $25 million, Burnaleo County submitted it, on the corridor's behalf, there's, I think, $6 or $7 million in there for here, and so it was split basically amongst the, the hubs, and that's for planning and engineering for the projects that Kingman said were on the books and needed to get done. So if we win that, you know, we get $6 or $7 million into what you're already sort of working on and hoping to do. I mentioned UC Berkeley, they've submitted $10 million grant, would be levered with another $10 million for rural autonomous vehicles, I can explain that a lot more, but a tremendous amount of attention, it'll be a national model, and the community colleges are involved in Winslow and in Mojave County, along with the University of California, that has basically said they want to make this thing happen across the entire country. University of New Mexico is involved in that as well. Lastly, the CPRG, that's the Climate Pollution Reduction Program. We were in Santa Fe, the state capital in New Mexico, talking about the project six months ago. Department of Environment came to Burnaleo County, so, to the corridor and said, "We want to apply for monies that will be spent on renewable energy things, and we want to know if it would apply to the corridor, the trade port corridor." And a part of the trade port corridor had been to support some of those things. And so Kingman, Winslow, the state of New Mexico, they brought in the state of Oklahoma. I've talked about what the proposition might be, they'd like to submit a proposal. Our state was a party to that, you see New Mexico and Oklahoma, state of Arizona was a party to that, and pulled itself out of the, the agreement at the very last minute, last day, because they decided to support a project in Phoenix and Tucson. And while that's their prerogative, they did it at the last day, and this proposition could have collapsed, and there's dozens and dozens of people that have been working on this, trying to get it ready. Where would we benefit for the trade ports in Kingman and Winslow? It would fuel, fuel, it would support some of the basic infrastructure for the truck mobility complexes, and we, it could support significant amounts of power production, that might be in solar, which makes, means we could drop the, potentially, the price, we could guarantee power, and we could sort of create a checkmark as an economic incentive if we can drop the, the price of power. So, that wants to get submitted, it would be, we're not in control of this, $400 million perhaps, it's going to go in, if that does go in, we hope that Kingman gets a share of that and we can invest in it.
That might be a good segue to...
...on the agenda this evening, but as far as the grant is concerned, I do want to highlight that there is no match on this, it will act similarly, it's a much larger dollar amount, but it would act similarly as what we did with the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Center when we received the CDBG monies, and then we entered into an agreement with JAVC to then utilize those monies in accordance with all of the grant conditions. And so what this would do is, New Mexico would apply for the grant, they have several different agencies that will be on board to be sub-receipients of some of those monies, we would enter into down the road an actual agreement with them, but allowing... We would enter into, down the road, an actual agreement with them, but allowing them to submit that application used through a letter of intent from the council so that we do receive a portion of those monies for what Adam and Lois are talking about this evening, the truck mobility complexes. So that gives you a little bit of what that item is about. Thank you so much, Lois.
Actually, Tina, quick question and counsel. When did you want to end this meeting? At 10 till or about 5 till?
I'd like the counsel to ask some questions if they have some, so very soon.
We can do it at 5 till, but that's going to cut it close in case anybody wants to take a break. So, everybody's fine? Okay. But you do have till about 5 till.
Why don't we end there and hear your thoughts, comments, questions?
According to Tina, are we going to have more time? Counselor Walker? I mean Savage?
So as far as the grant is concerned, that is an item on tonight's agenda, but as far as the project is concerned, now would be the time.
Okay, then Counselor Savage has a question.
Thank you for the great presentation. I think it's a great idea. It's nice to see all these partners coming together to have this vision to do it. You brought up the chain supply stoppage. I just got back from Albuquerque. I go there once a year, and there's getting more trucks there every single day. You see them coming through here, and we know they're going all the way across the country. How is the additional trucking or shipping lanes, roads, going to be maintained? Is there going to be expansion to handle this? That's one question. And then, of course, there's going to be funding required from the cities, correct, to help with this?
At this point, there's no definition of that whatsoever.
Okay.
There's no ask of the city.
Okay.
It's not to say that at some point, the city may not need to, want to contribute. There's no plan for that, right? But at this point, there's nothing.
What about-- The I-40 is in terrible shape, and we know we get the funding from not just the state, it comes from the federal government. And you almost have to drive that during the day just so you don't hit a pothole and have a flat tire.
I understand.
So my question is, is that going to be corrected to make it smooth sailing, so to speak, since the port?
It's not part of this project, but this project gives that a platform for discussion and advocacy. So to answer your first question, the expansion of the highway is not part of this. It's to streamline cargo movement. Once it gets to Kingman, it's to streamline moving in and out, or to Winslow or to Albuquerque. There's about some technology and about the road design and so forth, but the project's only so big. That being said, having the state really on board, it's not that they're not on board, it's just they haven't really paid attention to it. Our CPRG example was not a good one, to be honest with you, but we need to do a much better job working with the state, and hopefully that's with you and the county and your representatives to make that case clear. It has come up in some conversations we've had, you know, will this lead to, and Lois can answer this better, the state paying more attention to it? And the answer is, it's up to us to make sure that happens, because now all of a sudden we're talking about the economic activity, not through the state that maybe they don't care enough about, but it's to the state, to these major hubs.
Just one quick thing. When this whole debacle occurred with the state of Arizona pulling out, it was your lobbyist and Winslow's lobbyist that saved the day. They literally went in there and talked to the state government and got the issue resolved to what you're looking at in terms of today. So Kingman has already had a big influence.
So as I said, the state of New Mexico started this, good or bad that they started it. Came and said, "Could we help? Could we sort of use you to kind of build a proposition around?" They engaged Oklahoma and Arizona, both said yes. Arizona was behind, but they said yes. We're working with the governor's office. They said, "This is so interesting, could we do a trade port in Phoenix?" I mean, they were kind of getting excited. The state had to submit what they call a climate action plan by a certain date a few weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. If you're not in the climate action plan, you can't, this is government talk, right? Ask for a CPRG. In other words, that gets you, once you say it's important to you, then you can ask for support for it. It was in the state climate action plan. One day before they had to submit it, they pulled it out, called New Mexico and said, "We're out, we're going to switch gears, go to Phoenix." So the folks in California and Oklahoma, New Mexico, were not very happy with the state of Arizona. What Lois is referring to is your lobbyist and Karen Cruz from Winslow just jumped into action. We assembled a couple of meetings, they worked on it at night. By the next morning, it was put back into the climate action plan, and that might lead to, you know, good things--
Right. I just have to share this with you. I thought it was going to be a couple of paragraphs in the climate action plan, seven pages all about the project, so did a great job.
Thank you.
Well, just looking at the tonnages, as you projected, the tonnage is moving through the cities. I-40 is going to handle more tonnage than I-10 will. So that's incredible just in and above itself.
I-40 goes right into the industrial Midwest, goes--
It does.
--part of the South, goes, and so when you get to Oklahoma City, it splits and goes to where this councilman's from and other places.
Forty-four and then--
It does.
Exactly right, Ken.
So, but they got to get through us, and there's not much on either side of it, except the cities that are here, you know, and Winslow and all.
And just one last thing, and I know we're running out of time, but the important thing is not just to talk about logistics companies and trucks, but to talk about how that logistics connectivity can lead to manufacturing firms and better jobs. And that's what this is important to us, to be sure that happens.
Okay. Counsel, I know you all have questions, but I really would like to give our partners in Winslow time to ask a question and get it answered, if that's all right. So are you still there, Winslow counsel?
Hi, yes, this is, yes, Mayor Kano. Not really a question, just more of a quick comment. We just got back from Washington, D.C., from the National League of Cities Conference, and every senator, congressman, and organization that we spoke with was very much aware of this project and very excited about it. Also, I would say that part of an opportunity I received, I actually got to spend a moment with President Biden and meet him, and I feel like that this, having this be up and coming, you know, the new thing for the United States and the way we conduct our business was part of the reason why I was selected to get to meet with our president. So very exciting times for all of our cities and communities. And I don't know if any other council member has any questions or comments. Thank you for the time.
Mayor Kano, thank you, and we are out of time, and so I know we might have to have another work session about this, it sounds like, because I know you all have questions and some comments. Adam, Lois, we appreciate you making the trip up here and making this presentation. It's such a great presentation. And it sounds like, and I know Vice Mayor has talked to me about it, I know we're excited about this project. I think the rest, all of us on council will be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, counsel.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn for four minutes, and then we have a 5:00 meeting.